We're gonna start. Good evening, we'll call the meeting to order if you'd please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. Shaun, will you please call roll?
Deputy Mayor Baggett.
Excused.
Councilmember Brown.
Not sure at this point, I have not heard anything.
Councilmember DeCoursey?
Here.
Councilmember Holman?
Here.
Councilmember Palozza?
Excused.
Councilmember Trout Manuel?
Here.
Councilmember Wells?
Here.
All right, we have, if any of you have looked at the agenda, we have five different proclamations this evening, so I'm going to head over to the podium so we can get started with those. Will probably be the longest part of the entire meeting tonight.
Say here as you walk up here, Larry.
Here.
All right, we are going to start with Filipino-American History Month, and I believe we have Ronaldo Pasqua in the audience?
Yes.
Please come forward. Good evening.
Nice to see you again.
Nice to see you too. All right, so the first proclamation this evening. Whereas since 2010, the state of Washington has recognized the month of October as Filipino-American History Month, and whereas Washington State is home to the third-largest Filipino population in the United States, and whereas the earliest documented proof of Filipino presence in the continental United States was the date of October 18th, 1587, when the first Luzonais Indios set foot in Maro Bay, California, and whereas the Filipino-American National Historical Society recognizes the year of 1763 as the date of the first permanent Filipino settlement in the United States in St. Malo Parish, Louisiana, and whereas Auburn is home to the historical Filipino-American community which has contributed significantly to the economic, social, and cultural growth of the region, and whereas Filipino-American History Month provides an opportunity to promote the study of Filipino-American history and culture, recognize the richness of Filipino-American ethnicity, and honor the contributions of Filipino-Americans, especially their service with distinction in the United States military. And now, therefore, I Nancy Backus, Mayor of the City of Auburn, Washington, do hereby proclaim the month of October, and every October thereafter, shall be Filipino-American History Month in Auburn, and urge all citizens in the region to join in this special observance dated the first day of October 2018. I would like to present that to you, and do you have any comments you would like to make?
I have a question.
A question, all right.
Did you get the wording for the World War II Veterans Proclamation?
Uh...
If not?
I have not seen that.
If not, that's okay. I have a very...oh, thank you very much, my name is Ray Pasqua. Again, my name is Ray Pasqua, I'm president of the Filipino-American Community of the Yakima Valley, so I've come over from eastern Washington where we might get some rain tonight, hope we do.
You can take this with you if you'd like.
Oh, I would love to bring it home with me. The...and I thank you again for recognizing October as Filipino-American History Month, and I consider Auburn a very historical city in Washington State for Filipino-Americans, and there were families who were from Auburn and Sumner and Puyallup, and so, and some of those folks were my relatives. But this year, I want to, if you'll let me present this to you, and maybe you could do a proclamation later on this month, or early in November, this year, we Filipinos in Washington State and throughout the Pacific Northwest, and actually throughout the country, are celebrating Public Law 114-265, which Congress passed in December of 2016. I have brought copies of the federal law to you. On the last page, it has the signatories who were Paul Ryan, the Speaker of the House, Senator Orrin Hatch, and then President Obama. This was signed in December of 2016, and what it does, it recognizes the contributions of 260,000 Filipinos who were the allies of the United States and who served under the American flag in the Second World War. And so, Congress in December of 2016 recognized that. This is a five-page law, and I brought a copy for you as a gift, and it's so important because, as we tell our Filipino children, this is really, it really has a history of the Filipino involvement in World War II. Washington State celebrated it in April of this year, and I have a copy of the governor's proclamation declaring April as the Filipino-American World War II Recognition Month, and so I will give you a copy of that also. So, I thank you again for the history proclamation. With me today are Mr. and Mrs. Fernandez and Mr. Keith Flores, who are, who is the president of the Algonquin Filipino Community.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for being here, and if you would please go forward and accept the appreciation of council for your work.
Can we take a picture?
Sure, yeah, we can do it right now if you want.
Somebody take a picture?
Hi.
Nice to see you again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Or shall we move down to the floor?
You want us to come down to the floor?
Did you want that one back?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next is Code Enforcement Appreciation Week, and we have from Code Enforcement, Chris Barrick, Lead Code Compliance Officer, Tammy Capule, Code Compliance Officer, and George Winter, Code Compliance Officer. Come on up. These are the rock stars for code compliance and code enforcement in our city. For some of you, you may think that it just means they go around telling you that your lawn is too long, or you need to paint your fence because there is graffiti on it, but I will tell you that their work goes so much further than that. They are the eyes and the ears for the community, and they have worked with our human services groups and nonprofits in this community, because sometimes the fact that there is a code violation is because there is a human issue going on as well, a social issue going on as well. And so, these three incredibly professional and compassionate people deal with those issues on a daily basis, and I am very, very proud to have them working for the city of Auburn and that I get to work with them on a regular basis.
Thank you.
Whereas, code enforcement officers provide the safety, health, and welfare of the citizens in the communities throughout the state of Washington through the enforcement of local code ordinances dealing with various issues of building, zoning, housing, animal control, environmental health, and life safety. And whereas, code enforcement officers often have a challenging and demanding role, and often do not receive recognition for the job that they do in improving living and working conditions for residents and businesses of local communities. And whereas, the role of many code enforcement officers has expanded in recent years with the increased number of foreclosed and abandoned homes in communities impacted economically. And whereas, code enforcement officers are dedicated, highly qualified professionals who share the goals of preventing neighborhood deterioration, enhancing and ensuring safety, and preserving values through knowledge and application of housing, zoning, and nuisance codes and ordinances. And whereas, code enforcement officers often have a highly visible role in the communities they serve and regularly interact with a variety of state, county, first responder, and legislative boards, commissions, agencies, and bodies within the capacity of their role in the community. And whereas, the Washington Association of Code Enforcement wants to recognize and honor code enforcement officers and professionals all across the state of Washington and bring awareness to the importance of code enforcement to the communities of the state of Washington. And whereas, the Washington Association of Code Enforcement was established in 1988 for the purpose of providing ongoing training and support for code enforcement professionals working in the state of Washington, now, therefore, I Nancy Backus, Mayor of the City of Auburn, do hereby proclaim the week of October 22nd through 26th, 2018, Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week in the city of Auburn, and call upon residents to join in recognizing and expressing their appreciation for the dedication and service by the individuals who serve as our code enforcement officers dated this first day of October 2018. Would any of you like to say a few words?
I'd like to thank Mayor and council for your continued support. Without that, our jobs would be much more difficult, and also, I'd like to thank my incredible team that we've got put together, again, a thankless job that they're out there on a daily basis doing with tons of compassion, and again, it's not just a code violation, it's about resolving it in a manner that works for both the community and the residents, so, yeah, I want to thank them.
Anybody else? No?
Well, Chris's leadership as well as Jeff Tate's leadership, we would not be able to do much of what we do without you and without Jeff Tate and without the council, so for that, I'd like to recognize Jeff as well.
Yes, thank you Jeff, very much. If you would go forward and accept the appreciation of council for the great work that you do.
It's absolutely good to see you.
Tammy would like a photo.
All right, and next, we have something that we could probably all use, Stress Less Week. From the students at Mountain View High School, we have Jordan Starkovich, Rachel Pierce, and Donnell Wilhelm. Come forward, thank you. Welcome, ladies. I think we could all use a little stress less, right? Whereas, Auburn Mountain View High School DECA provides students with the chance to create a change in their community with the help of a program behind them for support. And whereas, DECA students Jordan Starkovich, Rachel Pierce, and Donnell Wilhelm are creating awareness of this prominent issue with the main focus that teenage stress is more than just a class paper. Recent polls reflect that most high school students have already experienced anxiety attacks at such a young age. And whereas, a recent study from the American Psychological Association found that teens rated their stress at a 5.8 on a scale of 10.0, and 3.9 is considered healthy. Reported side effects of their stress include 31% feeling overwhelmed, 30% sad or depressed, and 36% were fatigued or tired. The study also found that teenagers do not know many healthy ways to cope with their stress. And whereas, the Mountain View DECA group wants to educate others about stress and its health effects on teens and their developing brains, as well as providing them with coping mechanisms as they enter college in the workforce, and now, therefore, I Nancy Backus, Mayor of Auburn, do hereby proclaim October 14th through the 20th, 2018, as Stress Less Week, and encourage all citizens in our community to learn more about the benefits of designated stress relief activities and to participate in appropriate activities dated this first day of October 2018. I have one for each of you. And would any of you like to speak to your Stress Less Week? Or come on over here for the microphone so it can be picked up.
We first would like to thank our Mayor Nancy and the rest of the Auburn City Council for giving us this proclamation.
We're very excited for Stress Less this week, our group has worked very hard on this project, and we know this proclamation will help spread our message of Stress Less in the city of Auburn.
We have events planned each day this week at school because we believe helping teens cope with their stress now will help them currently and in their future. And that's all, thank you.
And that's it, thank you. Thank you very much. If you would go forward and receive the appreciation of council? I would say, very good. Now, ladies, were any of you stressed by being up here? It doesn't look like they are. Ladies, were any of you stressed by being up here today? On that scale of 1 to 10, where were you on?
3.9.
That's a pretty good GPA.
All right, and now we have Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and I'm going to ask Councilmember Trout Manuel to come down here with me because she does a great deal of work in our region on domestic violence awareness and initiatives. And I believe in the audience tonight, we have Kelly Rogers, Domestic Abuse Women's Network, Dawn, Director of Advocacy and Programs, and we also have Cheryl Workman from the Seroptimist Club of Auburn, she is the current president, and Judy Rowland, were you wanting to come up as well? Come on up. And thank you all ladies for being here. All right. Whereas, domestic violence and the health and safety of our families is an important concern for the citizens of Auburn, and whereas, bringing an end to domestic violence and the heartache and physical, psychological, and spiritual damage it can cause women, children, men, the elderly, families, and other victims is a responsibility of the entire community, including law enforcement and criminal justice, schools, churches, social welfare agencies, and each citizen. And whereas, women and children are amongst the most vulnerable among all victims of domestic abuse, and whereas, approximately 30% of all murders occurring in the state of Washington ultimately result from domestic violence, and abused women make up over 20% of all women seeking emergency treatment. And whereas, domestic abuse is also a crime against children, since most severe child abuse occurs in the context of domestic abuse, and usually follows the abuse of a woman. And whereas, in addition to countless physical injuries, broken families, and damaged lives, domestic abuse consumes substantial human resources in terms of loss of dignity, self-worth, civility, independence, and productivity, as well as the other resources necessary to enforce, prosecute, protect, and rehabilitate both the victims and perpetrators of domestic abuse. And whereas, all the citizens of the city of Auburn and its community are affected by the fear, heartbreak, and costs of domestic violence, now, therefore, I Nancy Backus, Mayor of the City of Auburn, do hereby proclaim the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness and Prevention Month in the city of Auburn, and ask all citizens to participate in efforts to recognize the serious impacts of domestic violence upon the citizens, families, and institutions of this community, and to work towards eliminating domestic violence within our community dated this first day of October 2018. Cheryl, I want a new copy. Would any of you like to speak? Are you kidding? It'll stress me out. On a scale of 1 to 10, where is it gonna be Cheryl?
10.
10. Judy, would you like to say anything?
Thank you, Mayor Nancy, and council, and everyone else in the city of Auburn that finds that this is a very important issue to look at. Seroptimists of Auburn, and nationally and internationally, find it very important, and we focus on it, and we thank you.
Thank you.
I'll never give up an opportunity to speak in public, no, just kidding. I want to thank Mayor Backus and the city council for this recognition. I want to thank the city of Auburn also for having supported survivors of domestic violence in your community for a really long time, also Seroptimists. And I'm here, you know, representing not only the survivors that we have worked with throughout my career, thousands of women and children, and some men, I also want to represent all of the staff, all of my staff, the advocates that are working really hard at a kind of thankless job, and I'm here to represent them and thank you for that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Trout Manuel?
Okay, I just wanted to just say that it's an honor, thank you Nancy, for, I, when I started as a council member and I saw that domestic violence was a committee, I asked Nancy if I could sign up for it in the region. The reason why is because I'm a survivor of domestic violence for 34 years, and it started when I was very young, like you, young ladies, and we need to really focus on the youth right now because our number one cause are domestic violence. And a lot of the youth are not educated enough to know that it's not true love, you know, they think they're in love and they're not, and they stay in a domestic situation that they end up getting married, and that was my story. I dated with my husband from the age of 15, we ended up getting married right out of high school, we were married for five years, and that's when the domestic violence started. And so, that's why I take it very serious, and it's a passion of mine, to advocate for the women of Auburn and our region as well. Thank you.
So ladies, Yolanda, you can do it too if you want to, accept the appreciation of council, or you can choose to go back to the other side and provide that appreciation, but thank you ladies, all of you, for the work that you do on behalf of those... I don't know if you noticed, but we do have the banner up above our entryway to City Hall, it went up today for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Thank you ladies very, very much. And last, but certainly not least, is Community Planning Month, and I think, Thaniel Gook, you are coming up instead of being the photographer, you're going to come up for the proclamation. Thank you for being here tonight. Whereas, change is constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, boroughs, townships, rural areas, and other places, and whereas, community planning and plans can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people work, live, and play. And whereas, community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community, and whereas, the full benefits of planning requires public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation. And whereas, the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories, and whereas, the American Planning Association and its professional institute, the American Institute of Certified Planners endorse National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight the contributions, sound planning, and plan implementation that makes to, make to the quality of our settlements and environment. And whereas, the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of the members of planning commissions and other citizen planners who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of the city of Auburn. And now, therefore, I Nancy Backus, Mayor of the City of Auburn, do hereby proclaim the month of October as Community Planning Month in the city of Auburn, and recognize the many valuable contributions made by professional community and regional planners, and extend our heartfelt thanks to the continued commitment to public service by these professionals dated this first day of October 2018. And Thaniel, I will give you this, and also note that Judy Rowland, who was up here, is the chair of our planning commission and has been so for many, many years, and Judy, we want to thank you as well for your efforts to ensure the best that can be in the city of Auburn. Thaniel, did you have anything you wanted to say? You're looking at your boss, do I have to?
I didn't know I signed up for that, no. Just, I'm one member of a five-member team of planners, and we all appreciate being here and being part of a great team, working with all the different departments, and appreciate support from city council and Mayor Backus, and of course, our planning commission and our chair, Judy Rowland, so, thank you.
Thank you, Thaniel. And we do want to thank Jeff Tate as well, who is the Director of Community Development, right? DCD. All right. Thaniel, if you would please go forward and accept the appreciation of council. And that, we are done with proclamations for the evening. So those of you that were just here for the proclamation, we won't take it personally if you choose to leave, but we do appreciate you coming in tonight. Homework, yeah, but we do want you to stay if you want to. I see that a majority of the people don't want to, all right. Yes?
I'm going to, if you don't mind, send you that.
Sure. Sure. Thank you. Thank you. All right, we will move on, I don't believe we have any agenda modifications this evening.
No, Your Honor.
We have no public hearings, so we will move to audience participation. This is the place on the agenda where the public is invited to speak to the city council on any issue. Those wishing to speak are reminded to sign in on the form provided, and please limit comments to three minutes. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Please come forward, give your name and address for the record.
Wayne Osborne, 1806, Fourth Place Northeast, Auburn, Washington. I'm here tonight to talk about Ordinance 6690, and I'd like to refer to Table 13.06.360-1. And it has to do with meter size and the cost of these meter sizes. In the past, the city has maintained a constant price for residential meters that are 5/8 to 1 inch. This year, they're proposing to charge additional charges for the 1-inch meter, and I'd like to point out, the system development charges, if a person wanted to put in a 1-inch meter or lower, the system development charges are exactly the same, so it's my feeling that the base rates should be exactly the same for 1-inch meters as they are for the smaller meters. I'd also like to point out, in 1990, we, and the area that I lived in, was in the Porter Water District, and we bought water from the city of Auburn. At that time, we contracted with the city under LID 338 to bring in water lines in our area, and at that time, when they put in the meters, they asked us what size meters we would like, 5/8s. we would like, 5/8ths, 3/4ths, or 1-inch. A number of us in that area asked for the 1-inch meters, as long as the charges were the same, like myself, who has a 1-inch meter. Now, one of the conversations that you've had during the study sessions is the fact that flow rate is one of the reasons why they want to raise the rates for 1-inch meters. I'd like to point out that most of the flow rates in this city are determined by fire flow rate, not utility flow rate. Good examples of that is all of the streets that have been repaved and redone, many times they've gone in and increased the size of the water mains, not because the utility customers are using any more water, but it's because of fire flow. A good example is right across the street from me, we have a fire hydrant. When they put that fire hydrant in in 1990, they put it in with a 4-inch line. In your water comp plan, it's proposed that be changed to an 8-inch main. The people there are not going to be using any more water, so why is it changed? It's fire flow. Yes, utility rate, utility customers are part of the formula, but the largest portion of that formula is fire flow. So anytime somebody tells you that a 1-inch meter is going to cause more flow out of that line, it's incorrect. Residential customers are going to use the same amount of water, whether they have a 3/4-inch line or 1-inch line. Matter of fact, when I was in the Porter Water Company, I had a 2 1/2-inch meter. I used the same water then that I do now. So the meter size doesn't make any big difference. So I ask you that you do for residential customers only, and I want to repeat, residential customers only, that the 1-inch, 5/8ths, and 3/4ths be at the same base rate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Seeing none, we will move on with the agenda. We have no correspondence this evening, so we will move to Council Ad-Hoc Committee Reports. Council Ad-Hoc Committee Chairs may report on the status of their ad hoc council committee's progress on assigned tasks and may give their recommendation to the City Council if any. We will begin with Councilmember Brown for Finance.
Thank you, Mayor. The Finance Committee reviewed 174 claims vouchers and five wire transfers from the voucher report dated 9/26, for a total of $1,597,000 approximately. All claims were reviewed and were in reasonable and in good order. The payroll vouchers from 9/13 to 9/26 2018 were also reviewed. There were 13 checks, 541 direct deposits, and seven associated electronic fund transfers for tax retirement, et cetera, totaling $2,444,000, and again, all in good order.
Thank you. And Councilmember DeCoursey for the Ad-Hoc Committee on Roads.
Thank you, Mayor. We have three upcoming meetings, with the next one being October 8th, and the purpose of those meetings is to work with Directors Coleman and Galb on preparing the presentation from the committee to the full council, so we'll be doing that over the next three meetings.
Thank you. All right. We will move on to the Consent Agenda. All matters listed on the Consent Agenda are considered by the City Council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Holman.
Move for approval of the Consent Agenda.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Councilmember DeCoursey.
I'll second the motion, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilmember Holman.
The Consent Agenda today is minutes of the September 26 study session, minutes of the September 17 regular council meeting, claims vouchers and payroll vouchers, to which my colleague, Councilmember Brown, just spoke, and the approval and call for a public hearing on the preliminary biennial budget. This will be the first of two public hearings on the biennial budget.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the Consent Agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes. All right, we have no unfinished business or new business, so we will move on to ordinances. Mr. City Attorney.
Ordinance number 6690.
Your microphone.
Gives me a chance to pronounce ordinance correctly. Ordinance number 6690, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Auburn, Washington, amending Sections 13.06.010, 13.06.360, 13.20.440, and 13.48.100 of the Auburn City Code relating to utility rates.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Holman.
Yes, I move to adopt ordinance number 6690.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Councilmember Trout Manuel.
I second that.
Thank you. Councilmember Holman.
This has been discussed at, pardon me, this has been discussed at a study session and includes multiple charts. And the rate of which you heard former Councilmember Osborne speak, has to do with the charge for the meter. The water paid, the water bill on the flow rate, is the same whether it's coming from a 1/2-inch, 5/8ths, 1-inch. The water costs are the same, but there is some question on the meter size, which we'll discuss later.
Okay. Councilmember DeCoursey.
I'd like to amend the motion. I amend the motion to state that the 5/8ths, 3/4ths, and 1-inch meters for residential customers only will have the same base rate charge as was stipulated previously.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Holman.
I'll second.
All right. Shelley or Ingrid, did either one of you want to address, I know that there had been some discussion?
The impact to the utility would be about $4,500 a year between, with 181 1-inch meters at $2.04 a month, times 12 months, so it's pretty nominal financially. As far as other services to the property, I have to defer to Director Galb.
Ingrid.
Yeah, so it doesn't necessarily change any of the other services to the properties, but I do want to point out in the memo that was provided that there are 19 other single family, or residential customers that are larger-size meters as well, and so you might want to look at what your intent is for that, since you would be only allowing it to be for the 1-inch and the 3/4-inch in residential. And I would defer to Shelley as to whether there's any issue with how they do the billing and tracking for that.
I would have to check with our utility billing software. I think we can probably differentiate between the 1-inch, between single-family and residential. That's details in there, but I would like to address the 1 and 1/2 and the 2-inch meters that we do have, and I did research those meters. And the 1 and 1/2-inch meters appear to be for fire flow, for homes that are sprinkled. And there are the two 2-inch accounts, were formerly commercial accounts, and they are now, they asked about 10 years ago to be changed over to single-family residence, it's the Carbonito Properties, down at 277th and Central.
Okay. Any other comments from Directors? All right. Discussion from Council. All right, hearing none, we will vote on the amendment to the motion. All those in favor of the amendment to make 3/4ths, 5/8ths, and 1-inch meter size have the same rate of 1824 for residential customers only, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
All right, passes, and now we will move on to the ordinance, number 6690, as amended. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no.
No.
Okay, passes. All right, we will move on. Mr. City Attorney.
Ordinance number 6691, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Auburn, Washington, related to zoning, adopting the Open Space Zoning Map Amendment to the city zoning map.
Excuse me, Councilmember Wales?
Oh, yes.
We are not finished with the meeting yet. I'm sorry, Doug, did you finish?
I did, I showed you the table.
No, that's okay. Do we have a motion for 6691? Councilmember DeCoursey.
I move to adopt ordinance 6691.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Councilmember Brown.
I second that motion.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Councilmember DeCoursey.
I just want to clarify that the City Council adopted ordinance 6677 earlier this year, and it voted to approve the Open Space Zoning Map. So the zoning map was attached to ordinance 6677, but it was not referenced within the language of the ordinance. Ordinance 6691 clarifies that it was the Council's intent to adopt the zoning map that was included in the original ordinance. So this ordinance has not modified the map that was included in ordinance 6677.
Okay. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of ordinance number 6691, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes. All right, we will move on to Mayor and Councilmember Reports. At this time, the Mayor and City Council may report on significant items associated with their appointed positions on federal, state, regional, and local organizations. And we will begin with Councilmember Trout Manuel.
Oh, my.
Do you want us to start at the other end?
No, I'll go in then.
Okay.
I had a busy week, and I just didn't want to go through the whole two weeks, but I wrote down a little bit of notes just a minute. You caught me off guard, Mayor.
I can move to Councilmember DeCoursey.
Go ahead and go to Mr. DeCoursey.
All right, Councilmember DeCoursey.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Trout Manuel. On September 19th, I attended the Affordable Housing Advisory Board meeting, and at this time, I was accompanied by Director Himmann, who also helped put together a presentation for that meeting. The main discussion topics that we had were related to a Senate Bill 5493 relating to the establishment of new prevailing wages within the state, and then also our 2019 legislative policy. So there's a lot of other things between that, but basically, the Senate Bill that increased prevailing wage rates has given some concern to agencies, to housing authorities, to all those who actually have to follow state prevailing wage laws. Because as an example, there was one housing authority in the southern part of the state who had a landscape maintenance contract where they were paying their landscapers about $12 an hour, and because of the change of the state prevailing wage law, those same landscapers had to be paid approximately $55 an hour. So the contract actually had to be canceled, and actually, the contract was requested to be canceled by the contractor. So the Affordable Housing Advisory Board has taken issue with the change in the prevailing wage rates. It appears that those wage rates are now mirrored after commercial wage rates, and not after any longer residential wage rates, or local residential determinations for wage rates. And that's kind of making things kind of topsy-turvy overall for the building community. So the Affordable Housing Advisory Board is preparing to send a letter to the Governor related to a review and another look at prevailing wage rates, and then also to talk with our state legislators to, if we can, kind of reverse the action that was taken, and go back to the local reviews of prevailing wage rates, and/or looking at the federal Davis-Bacon wage rates, which are substantially less than what is current on that. So that is a kind of wait-and-see item here, but it's on kind of the top of the list of the agenda for Affordable Housing Advisory Board, and as I may now mention in a minute, my other meeting with Association of Washington Cities as well. Secondly, Director Himmann coordinated a presentation that was conducted by Kelly Ryder, who was the King Colony Policy and Special Projects Manager, related to housing, and they presented a, had did a presentation on the One Table Initiative that is headed up by Mayor Backus, Mayor Durbin, and Executive Constantine. And Kelly kind of gave us an overall review of what's happening on the homeless end of it, as well as the housing end of it. And it has been established that approximately 244,000 affordable housing units will be needed between now and the year 2040. So the housing strategies for different income levels are going to have to really look at very carefully and very hard in order to develop and come up with that number of housing units within the region to be able to address the need. The overall goal of the, and Kelly also presented, I'm sorry, the Regional Task Force on Affordable Housing Draft Five-Year Plan, and they presented the action plan for that. And that action plan is striving to eliminate the cost burden on households earning 80% of their median income, AMI, and below, with a priority for serving households at 50% of AMI or below, which seems to be and is the greatest need in our region for those earning less than 50% of AMI. And then lastly, on the Affordable Housing Advisory Board, we did a review of the 2019 legislative agenda, and actually, we're meeting again tomorrow to finalize that, before a letter will be prepared, and an in-person meeting will be conducted with the Governor to review the Ahab's legislative agenda. So just in briefing, the part of the agenda item is looking at the condo liability reform, the Project Review Act, Growth Management Act for available lands, the Roca House Initiative, looking at funding for planning grants for local jurisdictions on a competitive basis, the multifamily tax exemption program that is currently, I think, between eight and 12 years for the tax exemption, and Ahab is recommending that be modified to a 15-year term. And then also looking at how the density within the GMA is looked at as well. Also looking at amending the Public Works Assistant Account to provide funding for infrastructure creation and improvement to jurisdictions who are developing affordable housing at a certain density level or in or around transit centers overall. And then finally, looking at RCW 36.70A.540, allowing affordable housing incentive programs, and then also looking at property tax relief for affordable housing initiatives as well. So that, and a whole lot of other things, will be on the agenda for tomorrow's meeting to finalize the legislative agenda for 2019. And then on Friday, the 28th, I attended the Association of Washington Cities Board of Directors meeting, and again, just in briefing, reviewing the legislative agenda for the AWC, and one of those items on the agenda again is also looking at the prevailing wage rates, along with another number of other initiatives that the AWC is looking at before we finalize those, and I'll bring those forward as we get those finalized for 2019. 2019 legislative session is going to be very interesting. It's a long session. There's still a lot of issues financially that need to be addressed by the legislature, and both AWC and Ahab are not looking at a short session, but they're looking at a robust session, where hopefully we can get a lot of things accomplished during this next legislative period. We'll wait and see. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown.
No report.
Councilmember Holman.
No report, Mayor.
Councilmember Trout Manuel.
No report.
No, you're not. No, you're not.
On October 24th, I serve on the Regional Water Quality Committee, and all summer long, they have canceled our meeting, so this, they called for a tour at the Brightwater Treatment Center. And you know, that is such a cool place to learn about where are, everything, we flush down our toilets, where they go, and what they take out of it, and they showed us this cubit, clear cubit block that was 16 by 16, I believe, and it was full of things that you couldn't even believe we flushed down our toilets.
You're not going to share those with us, are you?
No, I'm not. No, I'm not.
Because I know Councilmember Pelosi would have, but you're...
And I was just amazed of how clean the facility is, and it's a mile, almost two miles long. And they took us on a four-hour tour of this whole thing, underground and above, and there's only three to four staff that runs that whole facility, from 12 to 12, or 6, and then from 6 to 12, they have a gentleman that monitors six screens, and he's there all by himself. he's there all by himself and runs that whole facility. It was just really interesting to see how they actually use these little fibers, these hundreds of little strings. They look like little strings, but they're tubings. And that's what cleans all of our junk. And there's areas that was pretty smelly, areas that you couldn't even smell anything. But I am really learning a lot about our plumbing and how clean the water is by the time they run it through the treatment center and goes out to the ocean. It's 99.9% clear. They showed us where it was really mucky. There's four different levels that it has to go through, and they have to skim the top off and then run it through. And then it goes through another stage, and you can still see some little dark water. Then they run it through another stage, and it's a little clearer. You could almost drink it, but they said no, because you could see a little bit of floating stuff in there. And they didn't want to tell us what it was, but we could guess. Then they showed us where they actually use the raw material and make potty soil for the farmers back east. On the east side of the mountains, they have so much of it that they sell. And I've already touched that before. It wasn't there. But I touched it at a building downtown Seattle that is the first one that has been plumbed for self-sufficient. They drink the, they use the water to water the plants outside, and they use the other stuff for their pottering, for their grass. But I'm learning so much. And the next one will be the South Treatment Center. I haven't seen that one yet, so I'm looking forward to that. Then on that same day, I, we had the Blue Ribbon event where, no, it wasn't that. It was the next day. We had the Blue Ribbon event where we had McDonald's CEO Ian and Jonathan from headquarters come and talk to our, we invited the restaurants in our city to partake on this, to learn what McDonald's has done to change their menus for healthiest, for the healthiest restaurants. They've done a lot. They've taken out the chocolate milks out of the children's Happy Meals. They've put yogurt in there. They're going to bring the chocolate milk back, but they're going through the dairies and making sure that it's healthy and not have a lot of the sugar that it has now. They've even gone to the extent of changing the mayonnaise or whatever the sauce that they put in the hamburger to make it healthier for us. And they really want to work nationally and regionally, and I mentioned it when I was at Hilo, because I'm always bragging about our Blue Ribbon to our Hilo Committee so in the National Leagues. And they want me to get Hilo contacted with them for, in March. No, no, we're going to LA here next month, right, November? So I'm in contact with Anna, the staff from National Leagues City, and see if we can bring them in to talk to us about it. So that was pretty good. We had like about 30 people. We would have liked to have more businesses come. We had a lot of teachers, the school district come, and some other health people come, but it was very educational. Then on the 27th, I went to my Regional Law and Justice Committee, and I wish I could have had Chief Pearson go with me, because I didn't stay after. But you could have been there, so I could have introduced you, because we met our new chief of, our King County Sheriff. She was there. She spoke a lot about what she has done just in the few months that she has been in her position, and she's really looking forward to doing some more changes. And then we met the new chief of police from Kent. I don't have their names, because I don't have the paperwork in front of me.
Rafael Pudillo.
Rafael Pudillo, yes. And he shared a lot about what he's doing also, and looking forward to do more. And I, when they're all talking, I go, darn it, I should have had Bill come with me. But next time, Bill. So that was, that was really nice to hear about what they're doing. Then on the 27th, I went to, I attended the Community College at Muckles, no, no, that was the, God, I can't remember now. There were so many breakfasts and dinners meetings that we went to.
Oh, you're talking.
The Muckles Shoot to honor, it was the Chamber of Commerce sponsor, to give honoring our volunteers, our businesses, and our mayor received an award as well. But it was really nice to see one restaurant in this town, and I can't remember their name.
Benefra.
They took six of them.
Six.
Six awards for best food, best appetizer, best drink. I can't, everything. They took it all, and they were so excited to see. And then Nancy received the award for, I can't remember the title, but is for what she has done in our community in the time that she has been counselled. So that was really nice to see. Then on the next day, I went to the Green River Community College, as well as Councilmember Brown and the mayor were there. And it was really nice to see that one of our own junior council was one of the students that received a scholarship to go to a leadership program. And he did such an outrageous, you know, presentation, and I really look forward to seeing him being one of our next council members. He is really doing well. Is Fernando?
Diego Esquerra.
Diego. Diego. So it'd be really nice to see him. I really see him going for that line of work. And that, oh, on Sunday, this is my own personal thing. I belong to the Sons of Italy Bocci team, and we had a competition in Seattle at the Oktoberfest, Italian Fest, and there was 24 teams. I was on a team, and Ron, my husband, was on another team, and we came in tied for last place. And Ron's team came in second. So he came walking out of that room. I couldn't, you could just imagine, you know, because I've been playing longer than he has, and he wasn't even going to play, but somebody didn't show up, so he played, and he got into a winning team, and he's so proud of himself. Then that evening, we went to Holy Family Church to help out with their dinner that night. And so that was very well attended as well. So thank you.
Thank you. I think Ron just lucked out and got on a team that was really, really good, right? Yes. So just a few things. Councilmember Trout Manuel mentioned on Friday, the 28th, up at Green River, it was the Auburn Public Schools Foundation Breakfast. They have been in existence since 2011, I believe, and had a little bit of a slow start, but they are doing some great things in the community. And this is to help like the ASB students who want to attend leadership classes, but it's not in the budget, or there is a great music program, and some students who might be musically adept do not have the funding for a musical instrument to either purchase or to lease. And so there are, there are instruments that have been purchased for, for the schools. And there are several other other items and other opportunities that the Public Schools Foundation has been supporting. And it was, it was a good opportunity to hear the things that they are doing in the community. It was very early. It was 6:30 in the morning. Yes, there are two 6:30s in every day, but it was for a great cause. And then later that afternoon, Councilmember Decorse, you're talking about the average media, or area median income and affordable housing, the reserve, which is down by lows. There's the reserve and the villa. We did a ribbon cutting for the reserve, which is the senior housing, 55 and above. The thing is, every one of us up here on this dais could qualify to live there at the 55 and above. However, they, their population is at 60% of AMI. And so while it is not the 50% or lower, there is a significant need in our community for affordable housing at the 60%. So we welcome the reserve and the villa into our community. On Saturday, the 29th, was Airport Appreciation Day out at our own municipal airport. Director Gob said when she was out there, there were about 50 to 60 people. So hopefully, it had a great attendance during the day. We had decent weather for it, I think, for the most part. Yes. And then one upcoming event that I want to let you know about is this coming Friday, October 5th, and yes, I will be a little bit partial. It is the Homecoming Game for Auburn High School. But it is also, prior to the game, it is Auburn High School versus Auburn Mountain View High School pink-out tailgate. And so it is a fundraiser for the American Cancer Society. It will be at 5 o'clock, and they're doing this this year in lieu of the Homecoming Parade that they typically do. So if you have a chance to attend, it is in the parking lot at Auburn High School on Fourth Street. And then stay for the Homecoming Game at Troy Field at Auburn Memorial Stadium. And I won't say anything more about who I hope the victors are, because I have to be, I have to be supportive of all of the teams in Auburn. But with that, Mr. City Attorney, do we have any need for a closed or an executive session?
We do not, Your Honor.
In that case, we are adjourned. Thank you.